Sure.
We got it.
The first item, I mean if we pull the reorganizational meeting together, the first item is the installation of...
Just wearing an office.
Yes. Item say. Installation of new council oath of newly elected officers. So with that, if you'd like to have, there's three council members and the newly elected mayor, do you want to do them all at once or all individually? It's up to you guys.
We'll just do it all at once.
Pilot in.
Pilot on.
There's certain -- you wanna go in for the flag?
Stand by the flag.
Last three times.
Scott, you can just be right in the picture.
No, it's my big phone head will be in the way.
You want this for you or I want this for you?
I don't forget the words. Can you slide over a little more maybe?
Right in front of the white screen. Right in front of the white screen.
Get over Mike.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay. Do the oath, you'll raise your right hand, start with I, and then recite this in unison.
I. In and for the city of Waukegan County. We're here to support the Constitution and the United States and the Constitution states.
Congratulations.
Did he smile?
Congratulations.
You haven't got a printed one, huh?
Um, I can do it.
I ain't a computer guy. Good night, Scotty. Thank you. And they saying this and that.
I give classes on Saturday afternoons if you're interested.
I got one of these at home and it's just sitting there in a cupboard. Okay, we call this meeting to order. This meeting and all other meetings of this council are open to the public, proper notice been posted, given to the press in accordance with the Wisconsin statute, so the citizenry may be aware of the time and place and the agenda of this meeting. We just have to oath, call to order, my statement.
We'll do the roll call, I'm sorry.
I gotta do the roll call, I'm sorry.
Shaney Appleby?
Here.
Bruce Brunner?
Here.
Nick Gunderson?
Here.
Mike Kemp?
Here.
Keith Nedowski?
Here.
Scott Rasmussen?
Here.
Okay, now it says mayor's statement, that apparently is me. I got a few things I wanna say. Number one, I ain't a big fan of these things. But I'll learn. Uh, I'm happy to be here, I know the city's got lots going on, uh, some pretty big projects. Gonna make the future for this whole town and citizens a whole lot better. And, uh, I hope we can work together and build on it. And, uh, all in a common goal. I just made a comment to Jerry there and I say this in jest, take it as you like, but when I sit back there and I see y'all staring at him, things like that, it's just like sitting at Dairy Bar in the morning with six high school kids sitting there with their little telephones. Look up and talk once in a while, I guess what I'm saying. Don't mean to offend anybody, but that's kinda was my thought of it. All right. County Council Standing Committee appointments. That is on here, I suppose you gotta get up.
Yep. It can be down narrow, you can go onto the second page.
Now, I have to apologize on some of this, 'cause I got this list last Tuesday and from Wednesday morning till Saturday afternoon I was out of town, so I was doing what I could on a cellphone, texting back and forth. I, that was kinda my idea, the way I would like it. I'm sure maybe there's some second ideas and I'm willing to listen to them. First of all, can I get a... I guess I gotta have a motion, uh...
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, council committees as submitted.
You get a second?
I'll second it.
All right. And now, any comments?
Guess the biggest thing I was just wondering, just so that we all understand, what was some of the thought process that went into this and, um, just to help us understand it better?
It was a little bit hit and miss, but I've been following the council the last two years and seeing some of the things that are going on and I just tried to work out who I thought would work the best in whatever committee and, uh, it's not carved in stone, but that's kinda the way I would like it. Anybody else?
Um, yeah.
Like I said, I apologize for not calling the people first.
Yeah, I would've liked to...
But I wasn't in town to do it, so...
I would've liked to be called because, um, finance, here's how I see finance, two plus two equals this many.
Yeah, that's...
So I don't think I should be on there.
Okay.
The way this typically works, you've got a motion on the mayor's potential nominations. The council then is tasked with approving, um, or adopting, and so what you can do, and I believe, uh, two years ago you had, the proposed committee structure was not approved at first, and then there was, uh, the mayor then has to agree to a potentially revised committee structure and, and it could be a little back and forth, but the council ultimately has to approve whatever the mayor is willing to present to you. So at first, it's an up or down vote on these and you have the motion. And if you have discussion, this would be the time, um, just everybody's got a copy of the proposed committees. Within that then, the mayor has the ability to appoint or, or select a chairperson for each committee, so that, um, once the committee structure is pulled together, the mayor then has the ability to select a chair. Now with his proposal, he has identified a chair where every council person is proposed to be a chair of one of the standing committees.
Okay, can I call the vote then? All in favor say aye. All in favor say no.
Aye.
Aye?
Eight, four, five, six nays?
What?
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, would you please, uh, consider myself for chairing public property and purchasing and putting Nick Gunderson down at recreation as chair?
Okay. Put you on...
Just swap the two.
Swap.
Just swap.
Public property here?
Oh, we have two, okay.
Basically, it's the two chairpersons.
Two chairs.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
The other one too.
Is that right with you?
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah. No problem there.
Mr. Mayor, would you mind, uh, swapping then, Mr. Brunner from the finance and myself from recreation?
I like that.
Is that right with you, Bruce?
I'd rather see us stay consistent with what we had with Shaney swapping for Bruce.
I'm sorry.
I'd rather stay consistent with what we already had, 'cause Shaney has a background with the finance committee for Bruce.
Who has a background?
Shaney.
Shaney.
Oh.
Shaney's had trial by fire in finance, so, you know who's Shaney here?
I mean, um, Mike has been around for twenty-some years and's probably been a part of finance as long, you know, many times, I don't know.
I was on financial six years before that.
I mean, you're totally aware of, um, of what's going on. I mean, I have no problem with swapping.
No, I don't either. Swap... Where's...
I mean, but I'm not the only one questioning an appointment on spot, so...
Oh, okay. Yeah, I could swap them without, I don't change the chair at all either. Okay, with you, Mike, and Bruce. We'll do that then?
That, hear from everybody, but myself, I would, I'm good with recreation and that kind of a thing, um, finance, it just, a bunch of numbers run by like on a road.
I agree with that, I can't balance my checkbook either, so...
Can't focus on it.
All right.
Know what? Not much. So I'm, I'm fine to get off that and go on recreation, then it's up to you who you... It's fine for everybody to swap the two of us, then it's fine with me.
I'd like to see Shaney back on finance.
I have Tim and I kind of enjoyed it, it was challenging for me to have to do my homework and work with the numbers and...
I would, personally, I'd like to see more of a tenure mixed in with Keith's been less than a year, Scott's been what, two and a half, two? With Shaney, a year, I'd like to see long-term, um, tenure mixed in there.
Actually, we ain't got a whole lot of long-term here to begin with.
Well, that's what I'm saying, uh, Mike has been around forever.
Mike's been around longest, yeah.
There, there needs to be balance in everything, I think, if you have less experience, all top-heavy, if you will, on one.
I just asked for a motion on these changes, and...
Well, maybe what we'll do is, if you're keeping track, before you have any motions, what we'll probably do is get to wherever you're thinking. Either, I mean, you could do swaps by individual motions if you wanted and then have one motion to approve them all, but in the end though, the mayor has to.
Has to.
Might be cleaner to try to figure out what's your...
Well, with the two that were just proposed here, I don't have a problem with it, and if you guys are happy with it, I...
With Mike or Shaney, either one?
Mike and finance.
Mike for Bruce and then Nick for Scott.
Yeah. Those two changes is what you're talking about.
And is this now, we vote on this, or how does that...
You need a motion and a second, correct, and then a vote?
Both.
If that's what he's proposing.
You propose that slate and then you would vote on it.
Yeah, well, we'll probably just read off what the slate is before you end up taking, so then you get an idea of what we're looking at.
Do we actually need another motion before we made our legislative questions? Because we made a motion and then it...
It's up to the mayor to present.
On Shaney's behalf, I will reiterate the point that I know that she appreciates being on finance and she likes to be on finance, to put it bluntly.
And I would just reiterate objectively that, um, we all might have a, a spot where we feel good at, but I see as a, over, a bigger view for the people of our town, um, balance with tenure and freshness, et cetera, I think it has to be a balance, and that's the reason why I see it. I didn't see the whole lineup of this until tonight, and when I did see it, I think it should be mixed enough to where... Where, well, you know what I'm saying.
Well, I would like to have...
I will make a motion then to...
Well, he's, he's gotta present a slate to be voted on.
You're not mayor anymore. I thought we...
Just read them all off?
I thought we...
Yeah, if you want, so wherever, Mr. Mayor, whenever you're to a point where you have a slate, just run it off and then...
I'm unhappy with what I got right now. At finance, Keith would be chair, Mike and Scott. Public Works, Bruce is chair, Scott and Keith. Feast and Fire, Mike is chair, Bruce... Yeah, Bruce and Nick. Wait a minute, I got Bruce.
No, you're okay.
Yep, you're still good.
Yeah.
It should be right on your computer if you checked that. Don't...
Oh, wow.
And then you flip it anymore.
Yeah.
And you're taking...
Scott up there, right?
Yeah. This one, he goes over there. Public Property, I got, uh...
Scott.
We switch Nick.
Yep.
As chair, Shaney and Mike.
No, Scott.
Scott would be chair. Scott would be chair.
Yeah, Scott would hold a chair.
Okay.
That's what his arrows say, he's got them flipped.
That would be Nick down there?
Nick would be down here.
And then Bruce down here too?
Yep.
And then Shaney.
Oh, yeah, I got it three times. And Public Health, Shaney is chair, uh, Keith and Nick and Rec. Nick will be chair and Bruce and Shaney.
Everybody clear on that panel?
It's clear as mud.
Now, now a motion would be appropriate to approve. Make the motion, then we approve the mayor's city council committee structure as just read.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, approved, but I had just read. You wanna roll call or you want voice? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Hopefully, we have here...
I think the mayor should know that there's a representative that attends the Waukega-Fremont World Fire Department district meetings last week of every month, and that individual's usually selected from the police, fire and ambulance committee.
Yep.
Okay? Just as a reminder on that as well.
No, I'm well aware of that.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons why I like Mike on there, 'cause he's had many years on fire department and he's got ideas on it. Now, the two committees, the citizens committee and appointments, I'd like to put that off 'cause I haven't had a chance to call any people. Uh, if anybody knows of anybody that wants to get on some of these committees, I would appreciate letting me know, 'cause we have some open, uh, areas, of course, Board of Appeals, uh, Financing Commission, Board of Review. We'll try and get that done before the next meeting, but if you know of anybody that wants to get on a committee, I would appreciate letting them know that I'm looking or advising. Next, we have to point the city newspaper and depository bank.
What we have had is the Waukega County Post as the newspaper and BMO Harris Bank as the depository bank. We are taking a look through the banking as we're looking at financial software, uh, we're also taking a look through the fees that are charged and what the benefits are with the banks, but at this point, um, with BMO, it's probably preferable to stay with that, if you're in agreement on that. That's been the bank we've had for a while, we've had, our financial software is tuned in with that. When we look at changing that software later in the summer, maybe early fall, it would be a better idea to take a look at how those two interact.
I'll make a motion, then we go with that, uh, Waukega Post and, uh, BMO Harris.
Second it.
Motion made and seconded, go with the same newspaper and BMO Harris. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Now, you have to elect a president of the council. How do you wanna do that?
Typically, the way you've done it is you...
Hold on, can I go back?
Patrick, we probably, we probably should go back on the citizen committee appointments and just table that till next week.
Oh, sure.
So we have official action on... Or next meeting.
Okay.
So we have action on. I'll make a motion then that we table the committee appointments until the next meeting.
For citizens?
For citizens committee appointments.
I'll second it.
Motion made, seconded, to hold off on the citizens committee, uh, until next month. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And... How, how do you wanna elect the council, how do you do that?
Yep, the way we've done it is you have, you have a, you don't have a closed ballot or anything like that, it's a simple motion for nomination, and then when you have collected all of the nominations that are willing to be made, then you have a vote then on the nominations.
Like I could nominate someone right now?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Nick Gunderson again, if he's willing.
Any other nominations?
I would like to show support for Nick Gunderson as well.
I would like to show support for Nick Gunderson as well.
Nah, as well.
Was that nominations? Were you nominating him?
I was nominated and they were just, I guess, following...
I'll make a motion, nominations are closed. Kiss a unanimous nail.
All right. Nick, you're in.
Yeah, you can make that motion too, 'cause it's still gonna have to vote.
Yeah, it's an appropriate motion to make. Yes, make a motion, nominations are closed.
I'll second that.
Quack it up. Okay.
And then you have a vote then on...
I have, Nick is the only one who have to have a vote on Nick to be elected as council president. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Nick.
Thank you.
Now we have set calendar for me.
Okay, do you guys want to keep the same schedule of first Monday for finance, second Monday for public works? Set work with everybody that's on the committees now?
Yes.
Then finance would be May fourth at six o'clock. Public Works would be May eleventh at six P.M. Council would be May eighteenth at six thirty. Uh, when would we like to schedule a recreation?
Do you have the new chair of the recreation committee then as Scott?
Yeah, no.
Nick, that's right, that's right.
Nick, Bruce and Shaney.
Okay. What days do we have open here? When did they used to meet?
They used to meet on...
Was there a set date?
No, it kinda varied.
Kinda varied?
Tuesday or Wednesday, I think I have them on.
Play by ear, please. Let's see, well, the first week of May, I'm on vacation, so it shouldn't be that. I'm not coming back.
You're recreating this?
I'm gonna be ready from Tennessee if I wanna come down.
And I'll be in Georgia from the fifteenth of May, actually the twenty-fifth perhaps, with my daughter's wedding.
Well, I suppose that's a legitimate excuse.
So whatever you, always have fun.
Bruce, when did you say, May fifteenth?
I'm leaving the fifteenth and we're getting back, I believe, the twenty-fifth, oh, that's Memorial Day, isn't it?
So can we do... I'm sorry.
Twelve, fifteenth?
I'm thinking, how about the twelfth for Rec?
It's fine.
Yeah.
It works? Okay. Six o'clock?
Perfect.
Okay.
The twelfth you said?
Yeah.
Okay, then, police committee.
You're going, you're going the first week, Nick, in May?
Yep.
So then we kinda leave at eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth.
Well, Bruce is on police and, oh yeah.
Yep.
He's leaving the fifteenth, aren't ya?
Mike, Bruce and Nick, you three.
Public Works is around eleven.
Eleven.
But you guys probably have, Public Works is probably pretty full.
Yeah, I'd imagine there's gonna be stuff.
There's some things out there yet, though. I mean, hour and a half, probably at least.
Okay, 'cause I was just thinking that it would be... Bruce would be there.
Well, Rec shouldn't take all that long, should it?
No. No.
Do it on the twelfth after Rec. Bruce is there then?
Okay.
That work for you?
Yeah, works for me.
Okay.
So May twelfth following Rec. Do we need a public property meeting?
What do you think, Patrick? Yes, because we can update on some items we've got.
Public property is now chaired by Scott, or Shaney and Mike.
What have we got open? Well, when would they... If you mean between what the schedule is.
I mean, a couple times, I think, as needed really, but...
Yeah, that was just me.
Like twice a year.
Yeah. We usually do that.
It's accelerated up there. The timing always pops up slightly.
You could do that first week sometime.
Yeah, May fourth is the only week that's taken up right now, on Monday.
So either fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, no.
Well, I'd rather, I'd like to do it on the fifth.
The fifth, whatever.
Please do.
Shaney, Mike, does that work for you? Works for me. So Tuesday, May fifth?
Excuse me? Yeah.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Ordinance? We should probably have one.
As long as we stay away from Tuesday, I'm okay.
Yeah, we do have the animal ordinance that is...
Can't do that first week.
Do we need...
Um, what about...
You may wanna check with Attorney Kelly's schedule, either by phone or in person with the, the animal ordinance revision.
Go ahead and I'll let you know if there's a problem.
Like, May thirteenth, does that work for anybody?
It tentatively works for me, I, I have a meeting scheduled.
And then you'll just call and let us know if it doesn't work for you?
I'll, I'll let you know. I'll double check with them.
What day was that?
Wednesday or thirteenth.
Thirteenth, okay.
Yeah. If we needed to move it forward or backward, I'll, I'll available by four, so I could always wiggle one way or the other.
What time works for everybody?
Yeah, what time works? If you can do it earlier, then I know I can go. Like if you wanna do a four or something?
I can...
What time do you usually squeeze out, Nick?
I, I would...
I know between...
What are you that week?
I have no idea. So let's, we can do it earlier, you said, what time?
I can do it as soon as four, if I had to. But I could do four thirty-five.
How about fourth, could we do like four thirty?
Sure.
Sounds great, that'll work for me.
Let's try that.
Why do this now?
Does that work for you, Patrick?
Sure, that'd be great.
Write it down, do it on the computer. Four thirty.
There may or may not be a plan commission meeting.
Yeah, we, we thought potentially we may need to pull one together for next week, but that looks like that's not going to be needed for next week, but we'll pull that together as needed.
Now, how does that work? 'Cause that would have to get appointed next week, then.
So do I stay on that one?
Yeah, it would be, it would, well, there won't be a meeting next week until, until the appointments come through, so...
All right.
We'll be, we'll be clear on that one, but it's usually, that one's usually as needed because typically, applications come in on that, so...
And then what committee usually is involved with that, I can't remember.
The pla, it's its own, it's, it's the mayor, council member, and then there's citizens too.
So we choose which council members or the mayor chooses what council members?
Yeah, we'll finalize that.
You know what? I should know this, but I, she's getting married on the sixteenth, and I was thinking, no, we're leaving, we're leaving on the eighth.
It's two eights locked in.
Getting back on about the eighteenth, nineteenth, but, I mean, as long as you have a quorum and you've already set those two, I mean, Rec is not that much, as long as you have a quorum and...
I can't go, I got a son getting married on the sixteenth.
But as far as that's the two things, on the twelfth, what else was affecting me in that time? Was the public works, where was that one again?
The eleventh.
The eleventh.
The eleventh, so you're gonna be gone for public work? And you're gone for Rec?
I guess police doesn't matter, 'cause I can probably tell you've, you've been nominated to go to the, uh, fire meetings.
What does it involve then? I know I've gone to this several times.
So just leave it scheduled for now? And have a quorum?
I think so, as long as you have the other two people there and it's up to you guys.
Right, because it's gonna happen, no matter what, with summertime coming up and
Oh, yeah.
vacations and whatnot.
Okay. And that's that meeting?
Yeah, well, two of the items we've got are next Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, I believe. We've got five or six attendees for the Davidson-Cutler Public Officials Program, and because there will be a quorum, typically we, we post that to make sure that people are aware of that.
That's the twenty-ninth?
That's Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. And then the question... And then the question I would have then, because it looks like we're aiming for a special meeting next week, um, I would check in on whether Tuesday or Thursday is open or available for meetings? For us, and that would be for, potentially for a full council meeting?
Tuesdays are rough. If I can avoid Tuesdays, I like to.
Well, I can happily say Thursdays work perfect for me now that my husband's on Davidson.
Oh, there you go.
Thursday works, if, if that's a date it needs to be.
That would be a good date for it.
Sure.
And if we are able to get citizen committees appointed too, that way you can get it cleared next week and then be good to go for.
That gives us, yeah, it's probably better to have it later in the week than earlier.
Yeah.
Seeing as how we don't have any names on up yet.
Yep.
Thirty-fourth, you? Bruce, the thirty-fourth, you?
That's next week, Thursday?
Sure.
Mike?
Sure. You ought to make it get there, didn't you?
I think so.
Okay.
I'm really gonna walk my dog that day.
I'll hang a bag on the booth.
Good thing I'm half deaf, cause I'm not here to do this.
Good thing.
Yeah, these microphones are pretty, they do wonders, so, yeah, check it on YouTube.
Is that all of them? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
You'll wanna read it then too.
I read it all back. Conferring with legal counsel for government-owned body who is renting oral or written advice concerning strategy to adopt it, be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. The reason for closed session to discuss this ordinance regarding the railroad, council may choose to reconvene an open session after the completion of this closed session in order to take action on items from the closed session. Let me read them both? And then second one would be closed session with deliberation or negotiation for purchase of public properties, investment of public funds or conduct of other specific public businesses, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the reason for this session is to discuss the parameters of municipal building and utility roadway construction obligations and agreement. The council may choose to reconvene an open session at completion of this closed session in order to take action on items from the closed session.
I'll make a motion going closed session for all the reasons stated.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Figure roll call.
Yep, roll call.